I hereby call City Council Meeting for March 22 to order if everybody would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Rule call.
Councilmember Andreasek.
Here.
Councilmember Mercado.
Here.
Vice Mayor King.
Here.
And Mayor Sierra.
Here.
Thank you very much. Any reordering of the agenda tonight?
No ma'am.
Any public comments? This is your opportunity to get up and give your three-minute speech on compliments, complaints, ideas for the city of Buellton. I don't see any speaker slips, so please step up.
Okay. I didn't fill out a slip.
You'll get there.
Okay. The other night I went and...
Name?
Richard Kuzmic, I'm sorry. Madam Mayor and council members. I crossed the crosswalk in front of Ranch Club and by the church. It's real dark. I mean, when those, when you push the button and those lights come on, they're blinking on the side. I walked across the street to go over by the church and then I came back. The car went right through the crosswalk without stopping, and I was halfway across. I had a white T-shirt on, but almost to the fact, there probably should be almost like a light shining down on the crosswalk. It would be nice if, when you push that button, because I don't know why that, and this was a guy, Domino Pizza, delivery guy, but he's coming and I could see him, and I thought, well, he'll stop. Never did. And it was only two lanes away from where I was walking. But like I said, it's dark when you cross in that crosswalk. There's not much light at all, and at night, it's pretty dangerous.
Thank you. I know you've looked at it before, Rose. Is there, is there any way we could, like, attach maybe a solar light to the top to shine down or something?
We can't modify that. That light's the way it is. That's what's approved by FHWA, you know, in the program. So we don't, we can't modify those type of lights. In the future, we can work with Caltrans to see if there's other, you know, other types of fixtures that, you know, they would be interested in putting up, but at this time, you know, that's...
So maybe we can get ahold of Caltrans.
Yeah, like I said, the LEDs, they're not very bright. You can see them blinking on the side, but like I said, it's...
Obviously, the Domino Man didn't.
No. And like I said, he didn't see me either, because like I said, I was walking within the lines of the crosswalk and never stopped.
Thank you, Richard. Any other public comment tonight? Closing public comment, then, moving on to the consent calendar. We have the minutes of March 8, 2018, regular City Council meeting, list of claims to be approved and ratified for payment to date for fiscal year 2017-18, the monthly treasures report for February 28, 2018, resolution number 18-06, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Buellton, California, authorizing the filing of a claim with the Santa Barbara County Association of Governments for allocation of Transportation Development Act funds for fiscal year 2018-19, and acceptance of the 2016-17 Road Maintenance Project. Any questions? Any...
Move for approval of items one through five, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
I'll second.
All righty, Linda.
Okay, Councilmember Andreasek.
Aye.
Councilmember Mercado.
Aye.
Vice Mayor King.
Aye.
And Mayor Sierra.
Aye. Any presentations tonight?
No ma'am.
Okay. Public hearings. We are moving on to the resolution number 18-04, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Buellton, California, adopting the Measure A Five-Year Local Program of Projects for fiscal years 2018-19 through 2022-23. Ms. Hess.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Member City Council. Before you, we have our annual resolution. It's our program of projects for our Measure A expenditures through SB CAG, and this is monies that the city accumulates through the local tax that was originally approved in April of 2010. So every, every year, we give a five-year projection of our expenditures for, for our Measure A items, and we primarily use it for road projects, road maintenance projects, which includes paving, striping, concrete repair, et cetera, and as well as funding our transit system. We also have, let me see, in your package, you have Exhibit A to the resolution, and that has the outline of our expenditures. You'll see we have an allocation every year for road maintenance, but we do have sizable chunks that's going to alternative transportation, which includes our transit subsidies in there. Let me zoom in here real quick. You'll see we also have line items for concrete repairs, which we alternate every other year throughout the city, and every year, we have the $10,000 expenditures that goes into our trails funds to kind of build that, that fund up. Consistent every year, we've got the $1,500 for the SYVT Transit subsidy, and then we have the $20,000 annual expense for the Wine Country Express. This year, you'll see a bump up in our expenditures for the Breeze 2.0. That's our transit through the Santa Maria area. Our funding for that program was originally subsidized partially with grant funds, so that funding source has gone away. So all the partners have to kick in additional funds to do that. So this year, they're estimating that it's going to be in the $30,000 to $35,000 range, so we estimate 33 at this point. But they'll be receiving additional bids later on this year. So with that, we have the expenditures as shown. We do meet our alternative transportation requirement. Our city's requirement's 5%, and because we're doing all the transit subsidies in addition to our bike and pad and concrete repairs, we're exceeding our requirements. We're at 24%. So with that, staff is recommending that council approve resolution 18-04 and open the public hearing and see if there's any public comments, if there's any other issues. Otherwise, we adopt the resolution and submit the report to SB CAG.
Thank you. First of all, are there any questions for Rose?
Just one. Rose, on the $20,000 for the River Trail, you say we're banking that, so how much is in that fund now, over time? I mean...
I believe we have maybe about $20,000 to $30,000. We've just started that fund about a couple of years ago.
Okay.
So we're putting any little bit we have left over from TDA, which is only, which is only $1, you know, to $2,000 a year.
Right, right.
Plus what we've been starting to bank from Measure A.
Okay, so we do have, when the time comes, we will have...
Well, we'll have some.
Some.
Some amount of monies to get us going.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. All righty, I'm opening, opening public hearings for the audience. Anybody want to get up and speak about our Measure A Five-Year Program? Closing public hearing, bringing it back to council. Okay.
Thank you for doing it. It's good.
I move that we approve resolution number 18-04, resolution of the City Council of the City of Buellton, California, adopting Measure A Five-Year Local Program of Projects for fiscal year 2018-19 through 2022-23.
Second.
All righty. Linda?
Okay, Mayor Sierra.
Aye.
Vice Mayor King.
Aye.
Councilmember Andreasek.
Aye.
And Councilmember Mercado.
Aye.
All righty, thank you. This is our council member comments slash items, not committee reports, but just comments, items you want brought back to council. Councilmember Mercado?
No, just congratulate for the excellent job we had for the Wine Chili Festival. Well attended. It looked like it was a good time.
A nice sunny day.
Nice sunny day. They did a good job. They need to be commended.
Excellent. Excellent. Councilmember Andreasek?
One item I would have for council comments is the intersection of, and this is a citizen that called me about it, because he walks on Kalor. Kalor at Second Street, there are two crosswalks, the north-south crosswalks, the one to the west, the closest to Oak Valley School. The, for some reason, the asphalt is alligatored just right in the crosswalk, and he thought there might be something, some movement underground. It's, but, so I drove down, and it's like it's right in between the yellow lines.
Well, I've noticed a couple other potholes just started because of the rain, so we can add that to the list of the items we're checking out on that. There's one at Second and Central and one on the Avenue.
Yes.
Where we saw a couple of those.
And, thank you.
Mr. Andreasek, just to clarify, it's on 246?
I didn't mean 246. On Second.
Second and...
At Kalor.
Second and Kalor.
Second and Kalor, and it's the...
Going west?
Western, the westernmost crosswalk, the north-south one, not the east-west one. And it's, because the others are the same proximity, and they're not broken up nearly as much, so I don't know if there's been some movement underground there or...
I don't, these, the potholes that I've noticed have appeared the last day with the rain, so we'll take a look at those.
Okay.
Vice Mayor King?
Oop, I was out of town.
Okay. I just wanted to thank Ranch Club. I got to be a guest speaker there last night at their meeting. Very hospitable group and amazing with the rain. A lot of them turned out. Good questions, good comments, and thank you for having me. Okay, moving on. Written communications.
No ma'am.
All righty. Committee reports.
Madam Mayor, in your, you were out of town at the SB CAG last Thursday, and I attended for you, SB CAG and APCD in Santa Maria, the 15th of March, and it was very well-run, good reports, nothing out of the ordinary. I didn't, we didn't have anything we were asked to do, so that, that was last week. Today, the regular meeting of the Central Coast Water Authority convened at 9:00 a.m. We, we had, had an update on the rainfall, had been below average, but getting better in March, these storms. But the biggest thing, we had Orville was, had the major problems, and they've had cracks. They're planning a very big repair project starting May the first. I guess they figure the rain will be finished by then, and it's going to be bigger than last summer. Last summer's where they had the collapse or the...
That was nasty.
The loss of a section of the spillway, I think, moved out, so. And they're talking about, these, these repairs are put in at, right at $200 million. They expect the DWR to get 70% reimbursement, but CCWA will be having an operating obligation there, and I'm sure we'll get, get notice on that. There, let's see, we have one more. That was pretty much CCWA's program. Then, at the last meeting or two meetings ago, you assigned me to the Sustainability Groundwater Management Act, and I had an opportunity today to spend a couple of hours with Bill Bulow. He's the Water Resource Manager. I don't know if anyone, if you've met him, Rose, or not?
Yes, we have.
And Mark, you've, you've met, because he told me, he told me not to get in touch with me. Cell phone's working great. But we, we met, and it's, it's a, it's going to be an interesting organization. There'll be three people, and Buellton will be one of the, one of the participants in their, in their group. So I got to low down on their, their organization, and we're going to be working together and bring back more. I'm sure he'll come and make a presentation for the, for the city, city also.
Thank you.
That's, I think those are the only things I had for, for committee reports.
Thank you, and thank you for filling in for me.
You betcha.
Vice Mayor King?
Yeah, Holly and I did attend the library committee meeting a couple of days back. Quite a few things discussed during that meeting, mostly about financing and where the financing is coming from. What was discussed were several different models throughout the county, based on population, family income, median family income, and I think that our recommendation was one of the models that did the least amount of damage financially to all the stakeholders in that.
Option three, model six?
Option three was model six, and that, you guys could probably look it up on the web. But it was, it basically, it took a few dollars away from us, but not so much that it's going to hurt us, but we are working towards bringing those funding allocations up through, what was it called? It was the R...
Well, they, they base it on circulation, population, and the population numbers are from 2014.
Right, so there, we're going to make some corrections on that as to populations, such , yeah, hopefully, before it gets submitted to the county for approval.
And thank you for your letter, Mark, and thank you for attending.
Well, you were also...
You were very vocal, and I appreciated. I was the alternate. Okay, moving on then to business item number seven, ordinance number 18-01, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Buellton, California, amending Section 8.04.030(c) of the Buellton Municipal Code relating to parking of recreational vehicles, trailers, and boats. This is our second reading. Mr. Birdzinski?
Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, you introduced and held the first reading at your, your last meeting, and the ordinance is now ready for adoption and includes the two-and-a-half-foot setback from the front property line. And as I've noted, about three owners out of the approximately 60 would not be able to comply with the two-and-a-half-foot. But I did, just for due diligence, for a five-foot setback, I went and did another windshield survey, and another 11 probably could not comply with a five-foot front setback for a total of 14. So that concludes staff's presentation, and the ordinances is ready for second reading.
All righty. First of all, any questions for Mr. Birdzinski?
No, I think we're good.
Question?
Yeah, and so, Mark, those, realistically, the 14 were already not in compliance with the current ordinance from 2008, correct?
They're not, they wouldn't be, they were not in compliance with the 2008. The current one that's in abeyance is two-and-a-half feet, but the 2008 one, they would not be in compliance with that because it was five feet. You are correct.
So those people were already in violation of that ordinance?
That is correct.
Okay.
All righty, I'm going to open it up for public comment. I don't have any speaker slips. If anybody wants to get up and talk about the RV, trailer, and boat issue, closing public comment, bringing it back to council?
I think we've talked about it enough. I think we need to go on, and so I'd make a motion. Oh, yeah, we tell everybody to get a chance to speak.
You can make the motion, and I, you can still have discussion.
Well, I, I would only be in support of this if we go with that five-foot setback from property line. And I think that the, the people that would be affected by this, by that, are already in violation of that in the first place. So...
Madam Mayor, I'll second the motion that's, that he made, and then for discussion.
I don't know if he completed the motion, so I might just have him restated.
Okay.
Well, wait, hold one sec, because I'm not sure if Mr., Councilmember King was finished with his comment, so.
Okay. Well, I, I just want to reiterate that fact that anybody that this would affect by moving that to two-and-a-half feet is already in violation of the five feet, so there should have been no expectation by any person that lived in this town that we were going to move that to two-and-a-half feet. And I, once again, I will say it for safety's sake, I don't think that two-and-a-half feet is prudent.
And as a retired CHP officer, I respect that. I don't, I, I hate to say it out loud, because I could jinx myself, just like rain and everything else, but as far as I know, the vehicles that are parked at two-and-a-half feet, we have not had any issues in this town. So I, I have a lot of people that are worried about what's going to happen to their boats and RVs. I think that going with the two-and-a-half-foot setback is a gentle way of easing into it. I hope eventually that, yeah, that we might, that this wouldn't even be an issue in our town.
Could I ask Mark one more question?
Sure.
How many did you say are in two-and-a-half feet? Three?
Three.
Okay. I'll remove the number.
Versus 14 at five. And I, and I get it. I understand what you're saying.
Well, Mark, the issue is, is those people are not within the five-feet setback, the 14 are in violation of that five feet already, correct?
Well, the ordinance we have in abeyance is two-and-a-half feet, but the five feet that the original ordinance was at, yes, correct.
Okay.
Okay. So did you want to make the motion all the way through?
I'll make the motion to approve ordinance number 18-01 as written.
I'll second that.
Okay, Linda?
Okay, Councilmember Mercado.
Aye.
Councilmember Andreasek.
Aye.
Vice Mayor King.
No.
And Mayor Sierra.
Aye. Thank you. I'm not going to... Business item number eight, determination of employee cost-of-living adjustment, the COLA for fiscal year 2018-19. Ms. Zamora?
Madam Mayor, City Council, staff is presenting to council an approval of a 2.7 cost-of-living adjustment, otherwise known as the COLA, for all full-time city employees starting July 1, 2018. Staff projects there will be enough revenue during fiscal year 18-19 to support the recommended increase. The Bureau of Labor Statistics reported that in 2017, annual percentage changes in the Consumer Price Index, or CPI, was 2.7%, which is the requested COLA increase. Historically, the City of Buellton's average COLA increase is 2%, while the average CPI for the same period is 2.27%. And as seen in attachment three, historically, the City of Buellton has granted either CPI or a 2% COLA increase. The 2.7% increase supports this trend. In addition, a 2% increase is already budgeted for 18, for the 18-19 fiscal year. If a 2, if a 2.7% increase is granted, the overall increase is approximately $50,880. The portion allocated to the general fund is $35,550, and to the enterprise funds, $15,330. Again, since we are... Again, since we already projected a 2% increase for fiscal year 18-19, the additional 0.7% increase will only affect the general fund by about $10,600, and there's no change to the enterprise budgets. With this, staff recommends that the City Council approve the cost-of-living adjustment of 2.7% for full-time regular employees for fiscal year 18-19. If approved, staff will bring back a resolution authorizing the COLA. If you have any questions, I will, I am available to answer them.
Okay. First of all, any questions?
No.
No? All righty. Open it up to the audience. Anybody in the audience want to speak about the COLA for city employees? Closing public, closing our public, bringing it back to council?
I think it's fair. Most of the employees that I have dealt with are, are good employees, and I think it's fair, cost-of-living adjustment.
I will second that. I, I know consensus probably works, but we might as well. It is a financial... Linda?
Okay. Councilmember Mercado.
Aye.
Mayor Sierra.
Aye.
Councilmember Andreasek.
Aye.
And Vice Mayor King.
Aye. And on behalf of the city employees, I would like to thank you for granting this to them. I'm sure they will be very pleased, so.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And thank you.
City managers' report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We are, I've been contacted by the superintendent of the school district, Dr. Haggard, and we are having a joint use committee meeting next week, next Thursday at 4:00. So Councilmember Mercado will be there along with Kyle and the school district to go over their financial issues and anything the city can do to assist them, especially with, associated with water and their meters, et cetera. So we're going to have some discussions on that and other items. And then Dr. Haggard is going to come on April 12 to make a presentation to the City Council about the school district and some of their issues, and just open up the dialogue with this council as part of that presentation. So it'll actually be an item, so it can be fully discussed. It's not a public comment or anything.
Right. Just a discussion. Got it.
Buellton made it through the storms. No, no damage, no issues. We do our annual storm drain cleaning, including at the park, which worked very well. The little gate structure, I believe, worked very good during, during the storm. The Norm Williams property above us didn't impact us with the dirt. There's water coming through, but it went underground and went out to the river and had no major street flooding, so that was a, it was a good thing. And storm update, basically, it's over, and they had no problems with any debris flows down in South County. And everybody is, as of 5 o'clock, is starting to repopulate their homes.
Excellent. Excellent. Thank you, and thank, please, Rose, thank staff for all the work they do getting ready for these rainy days.
It made a difference.
All righty. Mr. McEwen?
All right. Item number nine is a closed session under the California Government Code, Section 54957 regarding public employee performance evaluation, contract extension for the city manager.
Thank you very much. We'll take about a five-minute break and clear the room out.